I'd like to call the Wall City Council meeting October seventeenth to order. Carolyn, would you please call the roll?
Welsh?
Yeah.
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hawk? Mike Anderson?
Here.
We do have a form.
Okay, with that, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Mike, could you read that for us?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in his counsel, liberty and justice for all.
Is there any order of business for emergencies this evening, Carolyn?
No.
Okay, do we have an attendance on Zooms?
We have Katie.
Okay, alright. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
There's a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have a conflict of interest to indicate tonight?
Twelve and fourteen.
Okay, Jerry has indicated that items twelve and fourteen, he will be abstaining from because of conflict of interest. With that, I would like to move to approving, I'm asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, Stan has moved.
Second.
And Rick has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And in that consent agenda are the minutes from October second for the city council, the minutes of the fire department for nine twelve, the expense and revenue reports, as well as the community center report, the golf course financials, sales tax report, and the cash and money market balances. Moving on to item nine, which is the claims for the city of Wall, the fire department, the library, and the cemetery.
No cemetery.
Oh, no cemetery, sorry, I missed that. Okay. Okay, so Kelly has moved. Stan has seconded. Okay, I'll give you a moment to review there, there's some pretty spendy claims there. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, motion has been made to approve the city of Wall, the fire department, and the library claims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, with that then, we're at item number ten. And we have a visitor here this evening, it's attorney Sarah Frankenstein with the South Dakota Public Alliance Assurance Alliance. And she has been, I asked her to attend so she can explain what I commented on at the last meeting regarding ratification of the nineteen eighty zoning ordinance. And she's also brought to our attention some other things that will be helpful with our meetings also. So with that, Sarah, if you'd like to do any further introductions or?
Yes.
And I understand you're on your way to peer for meetings there too, so.
I am.
You have a busy next twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Yes. So again, I'm Sarah Frankenstein, I'm with Gooderson Palmer, Dura Law Firm, that has our largest office in Rapid City, and we have a smaller office in Pier as well. I am what you can call a risk pool attorney. So you all have insurance or risk pool coverage through the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. It's pretty lengthy of a terms, you know, on a risk pool report. You're a risk pool member, and a part of that membership, perks that come with that kind of coverage, is access to risk pool attorneys even before a claim is made against you. So you might be familiar with how a claim is filed against the city, and then you can turn that into your insurer, your risk pool, and they'll assign counsel or risk pool attorney. The risk pool is very creative and very proactive in trying to help its members, cities, counties, and few school boards and some planning districts, to prevent litigation, solve issues before they become problems. So there's three hotlines in South Dakota. There's an election law hotline that you can call, anybody in South Dakota gets me. Or if I'm not around, there's a colleague of mine down the hall that takes those. You can call with governmental, official terminal, governmental questions or something, just how to properly put something on your agenda, or how to handle certain motions and everything else under the sun. And so I and another get those throughout the state, and then there's a third one through your employment practices hotline. That one gets the most traffic. There's two of us, there's one attorney in Sioux Falls, that generally she takes East River, I take West River, and then we teach each other's complex. That one, you wouldn't believe all the questions that we get with regard to employees. The risk pool has found that those cities and counties that call and ask questions for nature rather than wait and get sued later, it has helped them so greatly to keep their liabilities down, but they've also found that its members really appreciate having some of that preventative medicine up front. So I am here because you're, somebody with your city called the hotline, you get up to one hour every time you submit a question, you get up to one hour of my time free to you. I get paid by the risk pool. I happen to be driving on the risk pool's dime anyway to be in Pier all day tomorrow, and you guys were meeting right during the time I was driving there, so. Thought I'd just come and speak to you in person. I did, I want to know a couple of just little things so I don't forget. As long as I'm here, I'm just going to give you some freehold advice. Some of the stuff that comes my way, so I'll answer these questions on hotline calls, and then I'll represent cities, counties, et cetera, in front of the open meetings commission or in court. A lot of these things prop up with just the way your agenda reads, or the way you see we made a motion, just parliamentary procedure type stuff. So I try to help myself, I'm going to build a couple of things. So number six on your agenda, it's fine to have approved agenda on your agenda, but you always have to approve it if you have it on there, so it's kind of meaningless. You can't ever reject the agenda. You can switch stuff around, you can say, oh, number three involves so-and-so, they're not here yet, move that to the bottom. You can do that, it doesn't have to be in a particular order. But you can't change your agenda once it's been posted at least twenty-four hours in advance. So if you keep it on your agenda, you just always, always, always have to pass it. You can't, it's kind of meaningless to have on your agenda, is what I'm saying. You can always say.
Sarah, what's meaningless to have on your agenda?
Number six, approve the agenda. First, you can't do anything other than approve it. You can't change it, for instance. So if you got to something and you said, oh, this is where so-and-so is going to come in and talk to us about X, and they didn't show, you don't need to redo your agenda, you don't need to have a motion to redo your agenda. You can just say, let's table that, let's put it on the next meeting, he's not here, I guess let's keep moving. So questions about that? You can't add anything, y'all know that, right? Your agenda items have to be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance, you certainly can't add anything.
So you're saying just don't put number six?
Right, right. It can do, like I said, it doesn't hurt as long as you always approve it. Which I don't have a question yet, I definitely think that you should trend with everything on agenda at least twenty-four in advance. But that's not what the law requires, and you can amend the agenda even the night of pursuant to the latest case law that says in emergency circumstances, we do not define. So I am uncomfortable with you advising my counsel that the agenda cannot be amended after twenty-four hours. You can amend it only for emergency reasons, and I've heard straight from the open meeting commissioners mouths that what that means is if you didn't have time to put up another agenda, wait twenty-four hours to deal with it. So you have a broken sewer pipe, it means immediate accident. And you don't have twenty-four hours to call a special agent and put up another agenda. That, yeah, you're connected on an emergency basis. Anything other than that, you might get a little wings violation complaint filed against you, and you want to avoid this. And you do, and I agree with that, but the actual guidance is proposed agendas for public meetings must be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance. The purpose of providing advance notice of the topics to be discussed at a meeting is to provide information to members of the public concerning governing bodies' anticipated jism. Typically, a public body adopts the final agenda upon convening the meeting. At this time, the governing body may add or delete agenda items, and may also change the order of business.
What are you reading?
I'm reading from the Guide to South Dakota's Open Meetings Law revised Fall two thousand seventeen edition.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine, just know that's guidance, that's not the law. And I have had to defend cities who have not met what the open meetings commissioners deemed to be an emergency because they couldn't deal with it within twenty-four hours. So you don't want to have to have a claim and have an attorney assigned to go defend you because you did that, so. Keep in mind, I'm a risk pool attorney, so I'm here to tell you how to stay out of trouble, not how to maybe skate by, maybe, maybe, maybe.
Yes, but again, this is a informational that is put out by South Dakota Attorney General's Office, South Dakota Community Association School Board, South Dakota Associated Association of County Commissioners, South Dakota Association of County Officials, South Dakota Newspaper Association, Broadcast Association, and Association of Town officials, for the very purpose of informing boards what they can and cannot do. We're talking about an area that's gray, and I will give you that. But I am uncomfortable with you advising my counsel that they cannot add or delete items after the twenty-four hour mark has passed.
I don't need to argue with you about that, I'm telling you, I've been in front of the open meetings committee myself on the risk pool's tab because somebody has been sued or had complaints filed for those reasons. I abide the law, not by any guidance or anything put out by anybody other than our state legislature. So that's my job, to advise you about that.
And I will only qualify that by saying it's not against the law to add or delete items to the agenda after the twenty-four hours since it was posted. I strongly disagree. So moving on to the next issue, consent agenda, I already talked to your mayor. Consent agendas also aren't allowed in the law, they're also not prohibited, but just a regular agenda is discussed, and I think you're fine with like what you've got on here for tonight. Just know that a lot of people think that may violate the law, because you're voting on more than one thing all in one vote. That might not always cut it, especially depending on what you've got listed under there. So my advice is just to keep out of trouble, to not use a consent agenda, or just extremely careful with how you use it. But I generally advise not to use it, can't go wrong that way.
So item eight would just start with like the minutes and and each of these items would be enumerated on their own thing?
Yeah, like.
Is that what I'm hearing?
You need to approve minutes with your Florida party meeting, I think they need to approve their own minutes.
Right.
You needed to acknowledge them, or review them, or something, you can miss them.
So maybe those types of things need to go down under review as well as the budget report, whereas the only thing that really needs to be approved are the minutes.
Yeah, and keep in mind, each item necessarily something that needs approval. Each item needs to be a topic, something that gives the public enough information to know what you're going to be discussing. So if they are interested in contributing or listening to that, they know enough about what it is you're going to take up so that they can choose to come or not. So like I said, each needs to be a topic, not necessarily something you need a motion for in particular topic.
Okay.
Discussion. So before I head into what's actually listed in number eleven, along the same lines, number twenty-four, you've got executive session listed. You're going to be okay, because the way you listed that says for the purpose of discussing legal slash personnel issues. So your actual topic that you're going to discuss is legal and personnel issues. So thankfully, you've got that in there, so you're fine. Just know that you don't have to ever put the words executive session on your agenda. You can choose to move into executive session and out, and you can go in and out over ten times in a night. That's just a method of discussion that's closed doors instead of open. But it's not a topic, it's not the topic you're talking about, so you always have to make sure the actual topic is listed. But like I said, this one's going to be okay, because you've got the title. Okay, so with that said, the question that originally came to me was with regards to whether or not you guys needed to ratify an ordinance, and I don't have that, so I'll just be generally, I'll tell the people in front of me as far as what that means. But if you had an ordinance passed previously, you had a first reading, a second reading, it was published, it went into effect. There's nothing more you need to do. So with ordinances, you can amend them, you can totally repeal them, meaning just totally take them out of your code book. Amendment means delete parts, change out words. But you don't need to ratify anything with regard to ordinances or resolutions, they were either passed or they worked. Questions on that?
Yeah, you said publish.
Right. So I understand what I'm told is that there were some questions as to whether a previous ordinance was in fact published, and what I'm told is they found it and found that it was. So that's a fact I'm operating under. Otherwise, then, there's nothing. Let's say you were to find out it wasn't, so it never actually went into effect. Even then, you wouldn't ratify it, you would just pass it, or you'd do it again, just go through the full process again.
But you would publish it?
Every ordinance should be published, just like every resolution. Resolutions are the same as resolutions, and they're published every two weeks when the meeting passes. So ordinances get a first reading, that gets published, they get a second reading, that gets published, twenty days after publication, into the factor. Resolutions just have the one. So there's no ratification, it's just a passive ordinance review. And are there any dispute on that? On that point? The question is whether your ordinance was effectively passed to begin with. And basically, ratification is simply passing new ordinance again. Although everyone has been operating under the existing ordinance for how many decades, there is some question whether in the seventies and early eighties proper public fusion was achieved. So for ratification, you can use the term as the ordinance that we all thought had been legally passed for the last twenty years plus. But either way, if there is some question about the legitimacy of passage of the ordinance that's in place, that's what the council is attempting to achieve with ratification.
But in this case, we did find documentation as well as minutes, and it was published. So that was found in the county current.
Mary, what was the date on that, out of curiosity?
Here's, the date here is June sixteenth, here it says May fifth. And we have nineteen eighty, and we have the minutes that went with that. That's all been found.
I have not seen any of that. I know Doug Abraham had serious concern about the legitimacy of the procedure that was used in seventy-nine and eighty for passage, and our ability to defend the existing ordinance based upon the procedure that we could document was followed at that time.
Well, here's the minutes.
I haven't seen whatever.
Those readings?
I haven't, I haven't seen them.
Okay, they've been available since first part of August.
So that's really good news, so y'all should be really happy with that, because then there's no more question, I don't want to do myself either. But if you had your first reading, your second reading, it was published, very good news. Y'all should be very happy that you don't need to worry about that, and there's no question as to whether or not that was in effect during all that. There would be a question as to whether it was in effect if you did something to pass that ordinance again, because that would suggest you needed to.
Exactly.
There would be a question, you're right. If the question comes up whether it was passed appropriately and legally in seventy-nine and eighty, it will be a legitimate question whether we ratify the ordinance or not.
Okay, so.
I don't, as a litigator, I don't agree.
I agree, I understand that. So then, working with planning and zoning to try to move forward with getting a map, and I think Rick would agree that our planning and zoning meetings have been doing very well, so now I'm moving to item eleven. And that recommendation has come. Did you keep a copy, did I give you a copy?
Yes, I did agree over.
Yes. And so we are working to get the map, which the map has been the issue. And so planning and zoning met yesterday morning, and put this ordinance resolution together that we are bringing to your attention this evening, but we've learned that in order to properly move forward with this, we actually have to give notice to the public and wait a meeting?
Yeah, so let me explain that. So any committee, whether it's a planning and zoning committee, or whatever committees that you have, when they come up with a recommendation and they present it to your full body, which would be what we're doing right now, when they present that, you can discuss it, you can take public comment, you can talk about it all you want, you just can't have a first reading yet. State law requires you to sit on it, put it on your next meeting's agenda. The reason is, I mean, I always think about the spirit behind the open meetings laws. Always remember that the laws require the public to get to know what topic, what issues are on your agenda so that they can come, maybe email you prior to, or very minimal, come show up and make public comment about that issue that you're considering or discussing. So planning and zoning, when they come and make their recommendations, that's the first time the public generally gets to see what the recommendations are. Because your recommendations aren't listed on your agenda, posted outside the door, they don't know what it is you might vote on, and they haven't had a chance yet to chime in and talk to you about it. So state law requires that you wait, so you guys can absolutely talk about it all you want tonight, just don't do a first reading, put it on your agenda for next. That gives you the time to make a couple suggestions that I suggest, so your, the first page of this, totally fine. Second page is where, if you don't have it, try us. The second page, subsection E. I propose you take the whole thing out and replace it, but let's talk about why to take the whole thing out. Says if the official zoning map is destroyed, lost, or difficult to interpret because of the nature or number of changes and additions, goes on to say that you can remove the map. There can't be changes or additions to your map without a resolution, because you all get to decide the changes to the map, not somebody who sits down and just doodles on it and takes marker to it. So there'd be no, there shouldn't be any changes or additions that then you need to adopt. You make the changes and additions when you adapt your maps. So I suggest you just take this whole thing out, and instead, add some language that says we will adopt an official city zoning map pursuant to resolution. And then have a resolution tagged up that says our official zoning map is attached to this document. Or instead of adopting your zoning map by ordinance, or excuse me, by resolution, you can adopt it right in here. You can say paragraph two is we hereby adopt the attached zoning map as the zoning map of our city.
Boy, that's simple. That route is simple.
Exactly.
Yeah, ordinances take two readings, so they take a little bit longer, resolutions are one. The reason there's the difference between the two ordinances are supposed to be permanent changes to your law. Resolutions execute that law. So you're supposed to have an easier time and a quicker feeling just executing the permanent law. So you generally keep your resolutions to the amount of implied, not what's fineable, things like that. I do think zoning is a permanent change. The reason you have ordinances and resolutions is to try to help the public understand what's preferable to a public vote and what's not. So because ordinances generally are permanent nature, those are the types of things your public can refer, the possibility petition, and have the public vote down or keep in place. Even if you've mislabeled a permanent change and you called it a resolution, and only done one reading, courts will say that's mislabeled, I'm going to let you refer even a resolution to a vote. So you don't have to be perfect in deciding what has to be an ordinance and what has to be a resolution. Just know, don't immediately reject a petition because they're trying to refer a resolution, you can never do that.
Sarah, what do you think we should do on that other, do you think we should keep this as an ordinance?
What do you mean, keep this, do we pass it?
Well.
The first part.
Have, have this document after it's modified, keep it as an ordinance, don't make it a resolution?
Yeah, I understand that this reads similar to your old one, it just added an egg section, and yeah, you should.
An egg is in our ordinance.
So yeah, I think that should be in ordinance.
Okay.
That's a good, good one to pass. The second one, I don't know that you need this, only this up to you, but basically what this says is you'll know it's the official map if the mayor and the city finance officer have signed it underneath. If you want that, well, there, okay.
I, I.
I don't know that people.
Someplace along the line, I think we were under the impression that's required.
But I don't know if it's required, if you had lots of maps floating around and you couldn't, if you think that might be a problem.
Yeah.
When I identify the real one, you can do something like that.
Sort of, that is what's going on, we've got some maps that we don't know where they originated from, so I agree with Rick. After our discussions in planning and zoning, that that's probably a good idea to keep you in there. It's been signed and attested.
Identify it however you really want, if it works fine. You just do need something that actually attaches your map, and this doesn't. And it doesn't say we're going to do it by resolution, but you have to see that. We're not personal, very human, every ordinance. I do think it's probably better to put the ordinance map in your ordinance. I do, because I do think it's permanent nature, and then if those where those in your ordinance code book, do you guys have a codification of your ordinances in the code book?
Yes.
Quoted, that way your map goes in that code book, resolutions don't. And then you're going to, in ten years, you're going to find yourself in the same situation where you can't find it, because it's not codified in your code book.
Okay.
So I would recommend that, but like I said, if you wanted to do a resolution, make that work. So I know there's been comments different times when we attend trainings that they say a resolution is really no more than a fancy motion. So I guess for clarification, when you're saying which they do make that approval of any changes to the zoning map, do you recommend it is in an actual hard copy resolution than just a motion in the minute? I do recommend that you, actually think you should have it in an ordinance, but if you do have it in a resolution, have it taken. Rather than just making the motion after that they, like the planning and zoning would bring a recommendation that somebody is asking to rezone their property to something else. And we wait that timeframe like you're saying, then should it be in a motion in the minutes, or should it be an actual paper copy of a resolution to draft? If you're changing the map, which you always should, if you're adding another block to the industrial zone, and so the residential zone or whatever, it should be reflected in your map, and you need a map on paper. Right. So I would absolutely attach it to a resolution, like I said, even better to have it in the ordinance. So keeping my, if you live in my world as a litigator, so I come in and I present to some city council I've never met before, do you know what my number one problem law is? It's something that says find the attached called addendum A, and nobody has it. Whenever you attach something, it's like a separate word document, and you're hoping upon hope that the stable is what saves you over a decade. So just now that we have Word in computers, copy and paste, don't do addendums. Even with maps, you can stick your map in your actual same Word document, you can't lose it. So same thing holds true when I litigate contracts between businesses. Our agreement will be laid out in attachment A. Nobody ever has such, so there's always disputes, so just put everything in one document, can't lose it that way. Other questions?
And I've been paying attention, New Underwood's been doing a lot of adding areas too, and I noticed exactly what you're saying here, that they have an ordinance that states what it is, and then it continues with be it ordained that the following legal description be added to the current ordinance and zoning map, changing from ag to commercial. And so that's what you're saying, all of this is all part of that one ordinance that they passed at the September nineteenth meeting.
So what he's describing is you never have to rely on maps if you in a narrative fashion describe your map. In your writing. So when I do redistricting, you guys have districts, right? So did you do redistricting only by a map, or did you describe in your redistricting ordinance? District one will be south of Elm Street and north of St. Street. Okay, so then if you lose your map, you'll always see the narrative. And if there's any questions on the map, we can't zoom in enough to know. The alley. Your description saves you. You can consider doing that. I don't know how complicated your zoning map would be, but that is the fail safe way is to take some effort if they close up. And work with order, you know, to type that out in a narrative fashion is a pain in the neck, but. You won't regret having done it if you do it.
And that's what they've done, is they put trap day subdivision section ninety, T N, two N. So. The, I see exactly what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
It's also hard to publish maps sometimes in a paper, you know, when it's part of a. Resolution or ordinance, they charge per word usually, and sometimes they can't get your map in except for this big and that's meaningless.
Exactly.
All things to consider when you're. When you're passing that zoning map. If so, you just make this a whole lot longer. You can ject your page, but in a narrative fashion, describe those zones. So keep in mind, the risk pool has that hotline for A, you, A, you can call it, you can.
Question on that. So do you have any, who does that mean? Like the mayor and councilman?
Any of you can, your. Yep. So I'll get calls from city foremen who say, my grass mower, I wanna fire it, can I? Absolutely. Anybody who has been given the power to, won't hire, fire, has tuned. Any of those folks. Um, can and should call the hotline. You would believe the number of employment law claims that this took a dive. Because what the risk pool actually did was say, call the hotline, if you do what the attorney tells you to do and you still get sued, we waive your deductible. And usually they, they don't get sued because they follow the advice, but they've opened that up to any level really of city.
So you get, how many, how many calls you get a month?
Just me, I probably get three a week. And. I have. One to two other colleagues at my firm that take them. And then, like I said, there's an attorney who calls.
And that's also very interesting because the city called um their South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Um. Attorney at the beginning of. The issue with Love's versus Wall. Um, and. The city was advised. They, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance did not identify a conflict of interest. And.
For the hot, for the hotline call?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, that, that's actually even in, that's documented in.
Do you remember who answered the hotline call?
I believe it was Marty Jack. Okay. So, um, but the city's deductible would not wait. And I.
Did, did he give you advice and you took it or didn't you?
Uh, the question was based upon these facts. Um. Should the city be concerned about a conflict of interest? And.
With who?
With our firm or with the? Voting on the issue of Love's. Zoning application.
Correct.
And then eventually building permit application. Um, rezoning application, building permit application. Um, and based on the facts, which the judge subsequently um confirmed, what Marty Jackley. Original analysis was, which was that. There is not concern for a conflict of interest. The judge also found that. Um, and obviously, we're in front of the Supreme Court now and um not on that specific issue. But I found interesting with that. Your comment was that our. Our deductible should have been waived.
Yeah, I'm not telling you, because I don't know the case like you do, but if the question is. On the topic of what can lead to liability, and the risk pool attorney says do this to avoid it. And the member does that to avoid it, they should get their deductible.
So how do you prove, so like in that, if, if in that um. Scenario would happen. Um. There wasn't really a do this, it was. Do we need to be concerned about conflict of interest? And.
And you mean by the, by these guys voting?
By these guys voting on the zoning and the, and eventually the building permit application. But the zoning issue. The building permit. Uh, because at the time. The zoning did not accommodate the building permit anyway. Um. And the advice coming from South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance from the hotline was. Based on the backs, there should not be a conflict of interest. And I'm not even discussing. Whether that was wrong or right, that's a gray area. It's, it's a matter of interpretation. That's in front of the Supreme Court, but. I don't think that our deductible was waived, so that is what I was just interested in is I, I wasn't aware that maybe we should have.
Ask for that.
Sort of deductible.
Yeah, so we keep records as to who called and just real generally what, what it was about, and what we advised so that they can go back and check that. And that's the purpose, is to make sure that people aren't misusing the hotline and calling for their own control. And go by some stuff, but it's also to check to see if they followed that advice. Because if they did, then they're not, they want to incentivize you to call the hotline, and they do so by saying you're. But I can follow, if you want me to follow on that, I can.
Because who did you call the hotline? Is that what you're indicating?
Oh, I absolutely did. I believe, Carolyn, am I correct that you did as well?
No, I've never called the hotline.
Are you talking to Marty?
Hmm.
Okay, I can follow up on that for you. Because um, you should, if he, if he did, as he indicated, you should have that deductible.
So, I mean. Marty Heather, I believe it was, is called the hotline. With the Love's thing. And that's wrong with that Abraham, and our deductible was voted. Is that what you?
I do. It was ours, that full way?
Yes.
Yeah, with Abraham.
Awesome.
Okay, yeah, that, that's, that, that was.
I'm confused because you said Marty Jackley. No, it was with Abraham, who were in, um, given Abraham was our.
He would have been assigned your defense, but he doesn't work the hotline.
But um, deductible was with.
Okay.
With him. So I'm confused as to what you were referencing, I guess. Okay, I was confused because of the name, no?
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure that the deductible was waived, but if, if that's the case, and I would appreciate you confirming.
I can, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions about any of these things or hotline in general, this board?
One behind you. Yes, sir. Zach Hoffman. Um, so you, did you say when they zone something, they should leave the zone as that? Or like, would they, would they be able to go and rezone something?
Yes, so, yes, yeah. And so I'm sure you've got it set up where you have your planning and zoning committee. Take the first crack at that. So any city of any size generally has committees, but if you're super small town, don't, you don't have to, you know, it's. You're the governing body, so if you have a committee, great, you probably started planning and zoning.
No, we do have one in place.
Yeah.
Yep.
And my other question was, um, so. They're not supposed to have a first reading until the public sees.
The record.
So if they had planning and zoning ordinances passed that didn't get out to the public first. And they had their first reading already, would someone be able to go back and see that?
Depends when it was, depends when the law came down that said, um, committees first months present, wait, you'd have to check years.
Yeah, well, maybe go back in the minutes and then see that there's been meeting on this date, but. And like checking paper before the publication of it. Before, yeah.
I, I can tell you the one other thing that's kind of a hot topic that looks, those of us who do this a lot is. When you're planning a zoning committee or whatever committee it is meets openly, so if you put out an agenda. And you put it in the paper and everybody has noticed, just like a regular meeting. And so they have the ability to come in and listen to the report recommendation at that meeting. Then you may not really have to wait because the purpose has been served to tell the public what your recommendation is. They have until that P and Z meeting, until your city council meeting to go, oh, yeah, I want, there's only one to talk about. So there's some that.
Yeah, I think you have.
So then, you know, the purpose is served, and I don't think you give it open face complaint in that scenario, because you did make it open. You weren't acting immediately on something before people got to come in, send their emails, making their vocals.
Because in this case, this recommendation um was, we met yesterday. We do allow, uh, it is open, it is posted, we do allow uh public comments. And, but. You, correct, uh, no one, we, this has not gone out to the public because. Like noon yesterday, we concluded our meeting, so.
Is there a timeframe for that? Like the public is, are there certain timeframe, like twenty four hours?
Twenty four hours of the, yeah, so you have to give twenty four hours, that's why I keep preaching about the agenda, the public has to have enough time to. Know where to go find it. If you have a website, by the way, you have to put your agenda on the website.
We do.
Great, can you do that? Okay. So they get to rely on those things to know what topic is on, so they look better not to show up.
And so just so we don't leave any ambiguity, if we're, I did look up the case because you said, um, you asked. Um, what I was referring to, it's Molden v. Grant Dual School District twenty five dash three. Um, Supreme Court twenty six, twenty five. Um, the summary being, if it's part of twelve, up to but, in court, gave. Affirmed, it's out, but it's perfectly put decision, you tell the preliminary agenda made be amended. When the board makes action, becoming the adoption of the agenda. So he would, said he disagreed, and she was kind of, uh, what I was referring to, that was what I was doing.
I would be curious as to whether or not that case then affected the legitimacy of whatever was they were passing. It'd be wholly separate issue as to whether the open meetings law was violated. Which that was in front of the open meetings committee, like six of three, who decide whether or not to prosecute, there was a crime, has nothing to do with whether or not they. Find your action. To need to be reversed or not, but it's just whether or not to prosecute you or there's something less of that. Tell you shame, shame, and bring all the newspapers and the sweep that you violated. So those are two separate topics.
Right, but I'm advising my, my counsel. Um, I'm, I want the record clear that the South Dakota Supreme Court has ruled on this issue.
I don't know that it is on that issue. If it went in front of the South Dakota Supreme Court instead of the open meetings commission. It probably did determine whether some action should be reversed. And that's something totally different as to whether you also been prosecuted for violating the open meetings.
Okay, and I, that's probably not what I'm discussing here. I'm discussing the requirements of. The open meetings law and the twenty four hours. And the South Dakota Supreme Court, it's not yours, South Dakota Supreme Court, are the South Dakota Supreme Court has ruled on this issue.
It depends what the issue is, for what purpose. I don't, I didn't hear you say state versus council versus one zone, so I don't think it has to do with whether or not you've been charged. Criminally for violating the open meetings.
Is that, is that your question, Mayor? Was, you, you asked her to come talk about whether you're criminally. Um, whether you're criminally exposed to liability?
It wasn't a question, it was just me looking at how you've got a proof agenda on there, should say, no, you can't change the agenda, you can't add something right now. Because it's so, you could end up passing a motion on it. I, I agree in a court of law, they may determine whether or not that motion needs to be reversed, and a building permit that was granted, or a literal license that was granted, or whatever. Needs to be reversed. That has nothing to do with whether any of you get prosecuted criminally for allowing that.
But you're not sure on criminal.
Okay, Ms. Trask, Ms. Trask.
Throughout some pretty legal advice on that, so that you guys know. I think they get it, if, if you don't, you can come in later, but I think they get it.
Well, I just want to clarify, we are talking about civil.
Yeah, I'm talking about anything that can get these folks in trouble, I want to keep one of those.
And, and I want them to be clear about what the law. Requires and permits.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna head on to beer, thanks, guys.
Thank you for addressing us.
Watch out for those.
Yes, and look out for deer. In that part of the country. Okay, moving forward then, uh.
Okay, I, I still wanna uh discuss the recommendation of planning going on the first reading of ordinance twenty three dash oh three. Which they've recommended, uh. Where are we at on that? Are we gonna tune it up and bring it up at the next meeting?
Well, that's what she's telling us to do, that we don't need this part in here.
Yep.
We need to rewrite this. And we need to get um this information out to the public.
How, how are we gonna do that?
Well, I think from. Um. I think because the meetings were so close.
Right.
If we would have had time for. What was happening, because I had it posted on the. Door, the planning and zoning meeting, and then with our council meeting coming up and stuff so close, I think.
But it, it seems like it's working out, because we'll get to tune this up.
Right.
And then we're definitely gonna keep the official zoning map. Is signed by the mayor and the finance officer. I mean, I've read that about twenty different places.
And the map has to be attached to this before we do a reading, is that correct?
It was her.
The map could be done without this, so, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we do have, she brought a map yesterday. And it's large, so we have to get.
This kind of cleans up a lot of things, I think, I think this is good, if we can just get it in correctly.
Right. I think, and this is the only part she's suggesting that we redo here, and I think we can do that easily.
Awesome.
And our planning and zoning meetings are going very well. Would you agree?
I agree.
Organized, that we moved through the information. Um, and get a lot covered in not a lot of time, and our next meeting is already scheduled.
Are we good on that?
November first, from one to three.
Over, awesome, thank you.
I haven't heard back from everyone, but.
But nearly everybody. Including Linda and. Yeah, of course. Okay, so then, that brings us to item number twelve, which is a pay request. Number eleven, uh, to Western Engineering for six hundred and thirty two thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty nine cents. And that um estimate is, or that payment request was attached.
Mary, sorry to interrupt, should that be Western Construction?
Oh.
Not Western.
Engineering, oh, good job, yes. Western. Thank you, Jared, for knowing that.
I love it. K L J and that's Indian area, man, just my words start getting.
I didn't know that it was the same till I read that. Huh, then I hope that is.
Okay, and this is the pay request, or the item that you have recused yourself from. Okay, so, um. They have completed. The asphalt according to um Travis. They are uh starting to lay dirt so they can start seeding. They are doing the conduit so they can start lighting, uh, the lighting process. I know this rain slowed them down a few days. However, it was beneficial for a lot of other people, so they got a little bit behind, but they're doing pretty darn good, so. With that, is there a motion to approve? Are you?
That's a move.
Okay, Stan has moved to approve the pay request of six hundred and thirty two thousand, three hundred and four dollars, eighty nine cents. Is there a second?
Second.
And Kelly has seconded. Any questions or concerns?
Don't go ahead and do that, I just have a comment.
Well, this would be the best time for.
Well, so when, when you talk about the seeding, last time we talked about some of those out acres. You know, something's begun with that, that are they responsible for those acres that aren't part of the runway, like some of the crop acres? That are no longer gonna be um leased out, that are now inside the, inside the airport.
I believe Carolyn is working with the people that do lease that to decrease their. Uh, because um Mr. Delica brought that to our attention right away. Did make it possible for them to get in and combine it for this. Did make it possible for them to get in and combine it for this year, but then it will be reduced by that number of acres. And uh, that conversation happened with the uh, leasers, is that true?
I have not had a conversation with them, yeah.
Okay.
Well.
We've gotta make sure that gets done.
I'm turned about, some of those acres will no longer be cropped, so. And Western Construction's unresponsible, but you probably still need to do something to get that planted, that fall for rather than weeds, and I don't know what.
Right.
I don't know who would do that, but.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it'll be taken out of their.
Right.
Thing, so it'll probably be on us to get that done.
And then that would be eligible to behave and go with the airport bin, correct, is what you're thinking, right? Very good.
Uh, depending, cause we do have, and then granted, I'm not been out there, but is it within two hundred feet of the runway, would it be?
What was the area you're talking?
At the end of it, where they had it telling you that. Cause there's always that burbage with the agreement that they have to stay within two hundred feet of the runway. So I don't know, I guess.
Okay, so that definitely needs to be worked out then, to make sure before we let bids and that the farming of wheat contract needs to be decreased. And that the, the hay bid would be affected. And that we may have to do some seeding up there. So, okay, so with that, any other questions or concerns or thoughts?
No, I'm gonna ask, oh, okay, it's fine.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the uh, public comments, which is a three minute time period. For anyone that would like to address the uh, council.
Hi.
Hello.
I just wanted to do a quick report on the agenda, so. We had a meeting last night, and I hope maybe I should come over and just leave a quick report. So for the month of September, the Volinones responded to a total of thirty-seven calls. Um, sixteen resulted in transports to the hospital, six were refusals. And we had uh, six uh, scheduled standby runs to football teams. Uh, four were here in Wall and we had two in the Underwoods. We do quite a bit of standbys from the Underwood, I think you always reach out to us for audios and for football runs. Anyway, one of the things I wanted to mention that as of September thirtieth, the service has reported hundred and twenty calls. Uh, for this year compared to hundred sixty-one last year, so we're down, which is, I think I, I told you before, so uh, the number falls down compared to last year. Pretty curious to see how we're gonna end up. Uh, it's probably good, people not sick anymore, I mean, it's a good news, but for us, it's, we're gonna get less money coming in. It's not like we had a lot coming, but still. Uh, the one of the things um, we learned, tax district assessment is done. And it looks very promising for next year, it seems like you could get around three hundred thousand dollars from the tax district.
How much?
Three hundred thousand dollars. Um, based on expense report we just uh, reviewed last night, it seems like we need this money because um, the bills started coming in, and for the next year, you know, we do always annual billing, like insurance and all that stuff. I mean, our bills coming in pretty much doubled from what it used to be since. I mean, we're receiving this extra money and it seems like it's gonna go past the game too, so um. We all know it's inflation, right, we're gonna blame it on inflation, but yeah, everything is doubling.
Is the three hundred thousand um, how much more is that from the district than like this year?
Hundred, we got a hundred eighty this year. So it's a, it's a significant increase. So hopefully, we still get it with this month, so we just have to trust fingers and wait, until it ends this year. Anyway, um, this is pretty much all I just wanted to tell you, uh, we actively hire you because we have, our store is pretty small, um. We're running like a five, we're only, we probably have five E M Ps on, on crew right now left. And it's pretty hard to power twenty-four seven service when you have. Anyway, so we're trying to hire people, we're running ads, but um. I think it's acceptable. Anyway, still working on it. I do appreciate your talking back. The view, inviting everyone. So I hope I don't have to be there paying for my money, I'm just trying to make it work, but I do appreciate your help.
So Lily, in this, you're gonna do the concessions for?
November fourth, yeah, just to try to raise some money.
And then what are you, what are you going to have there?
Uh, I'm gonna talk in a minute about it. Hey, you're making me know we do that, he doesn't know yet. Okay, yeah, but I know you, you're gonna help, so.
Yes.
Hey, you, you have any other questions, guys? Hey?
Thank you, Kelly, for offering to help her, that's awesome, they're a small crew.
Yeah, I know.
That's very much appreciated. Okay, any other public comments? Mr. Huffman.
Good evening, Council, Zach Hoffman, um, with the last meeting that you and I had, Mayor, I saw that the there's a little sign underneath for the stop crosswalk ahead, so I appreciate that, but I was wondering like, that twenty mile per hour sign is so close to that stop sign, if we can just get that twenty mile per hour stop sign down? And like, I could even talk to some people at the state to see if we can get a square one that says stop sign ahead or something, that's just something I think of, but I do appreciate getting that little one under there.
Well, thank you for your suggestion on that, and thank you, Garrett, for accepting that suggestion, and it's still a work in progress because um, until Thursday, I won't, on Thursday, I'll be back to, I'll see the sign that I really am trying to that think would work best there.
Oh, perfect.
And so I, until Thursday, then I'll get that information to Garrett and he's on it, so.
Perfect.
But.
South Dakota Garrett, you're on it? Yeah, perfect.
Oh.
Yeah, I, because I just wondered, cause it was there and there's no speed limit sign on that whole entire next block from I see what you're from. From the motel all the way down to Jim Carrey's house, that's the only thing that, you know, we, they, we got a grant to go through and change everything and they added stuff where they thought it needed to be, so that's the only reason. I'm just wondering. Where maybe that's why. Yeah. And if we could move it down to the corner, by the Jackalope Corner, down from the stop sign where their sign is, and it kind of, you know, curves in to go to the Red Rock and maybe you know that. All right, well, thank you. We'll get it figured out.
Yes, we're, we're working on it, it's just not moving as fast as we want it to, but we'll get there, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? All right, that brings us to the permit, uh, item number fourteen, we have a building commercial building permit for uh, Dakota Mill and Grain, they're gonna relocate their liquid fertilizer plant and uh, build a new containment area, and if, I see some gentleman here from Dakota Mill. Yes, would you like to address?
I don't think we've got questions, we just, um, we need to move it, cause our liner's getting age on it, so that's a purpose of moving it. We're gonna eventually do some other work where existing ones at, so it's gonna go up next to just south of the football field. We're still trying to figure exactly where it's gonna set on the property line, we just had surveyor down yesterday, so we know where our property line is, so we just gotta figure out our distance from that flood ditch, if we've got enough room, that angles a little bit, so we'll just have to see how that's gonna sit, set for distance.
Are, are there any environmental safety concerns?
I don't, no, not really, cause I mean, the new construction's gonna have new liners in it, we always have, you know, it's gonna be a wooden dike with liners, two layers of liners, is what we do. So, that's basically how it.
So this picture that shows fourteen, there's gonna be fourteen, like bins?
There are tank, there are liquid tanks.
Liquid tanks.
I think they're actually, the picture probably cuts off a little bit, there's actually more than fourteen.
Okay.
Right now, currently I have eighteen.
Oh, okay.
We're having, actually, it's gonna be another twenty foot longer, able to add two more to it, and a couple of the ones we're gonna, some of them are gonna be replaced that are in there, so we're gonna have a couple bigger ones. So.
So twenty altogether?
Um, yeah, probably.
And, and then the present ones will go away?
That, yeah, there, a lot of the existing ones will be moved to the new, the new um, containment once we feel they're, they're good enough to reuse.
And then will you realign those?
Um, the containment will be lined, you know, and, and stuff like that, if the tanks aren't lined.
Okay.
The ones, the ones that's gonna replace tanks, we're putting fiberglass tanks in instead of steel tanks, so long-term use of them is a lot more, longer.
Okay.
Or replace you.
So does the dry fertilizer come in on train or on, by truck?
Mostly truck, there is a little bit comes in by train.
Okay.
The liquid, um, more of it comes, it's about half and half, so we'll be offloading off the siding that's ours, farther north, and when we offload liquid cars.
So it comes in a truck and then farmers pick it up there and take it to their fields, or you deliver the product? Too, so, okay. Is there any other questions? Would I have a motion to approve?
Well, I have.
Excuse me.
When, when is, if, if we approve this, when is construction gonna start?
Um, planning in about a month to start the construction on the containment if we can get the dirt work done. There's a lot of uh, fill that's gonna have to go in there, the level down by the football field is pretty low compared to up above. So we gotta get some build dirt called in and stuff like that, but they had an opening come up, so I think they're shooting for about a month from now.
Oh, wow.
Start construction.
So what construction company is it, did it?
Rent, J C Ramsdale's gonna do the containment and probably the concrete, uh, they're a flandrew.
Okay, so that'll be another construction crew in town then, or a bit, very good.
We're hoping Western can do some of the dirt work for us.
Sure.
And otherwise, we got some local guys we're gonna hire too.
Okay.
So.
All right.
So since it's commercial, will there be some more detailed plans at some point?
Yeah, there, we gotta get approved by this Department of Ag, right, um, Ramsdale's working on a um, more of a detail with them, but needs more, we can try to get you some more information. That drawing that she's got is kind of what, the layout of it, the, so it's gonna be wooden with like, two layers of liners, sand and gravel between with leak detection between the two layers of liner, that, and it comes out to a pipe that you can, inspection pipes.
I, I, I think we could have a more, more detailed plan, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
I think we, we've requested that before from others, so, okay. Any other questions, or would I have a new, uh, motion to approve the commercial building permit for Dakota Mill and Grain?
Move to approve.
Okay, Stan has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Rick has seconded, any further questions, concerns?
I have one question, are you guys gonna move the water?
The, yeah, the water, um, will come from that pit, pit that's there, we'll have to have water to the other one. So we'll have to, I don't know how to, exactly what we'll do there, if we probably have just put another water line in, West River's gonna come in and put some, we're gonna have to get power up there. There's gonna be a little storage shed next to the dike to put the, all electrical components in for the motors and stuff like that, so there's gonna be transformers and stuff, but their power pulls by, so they don't have to transfer it for it to get power there. For the, or, where, I don't, the only thing I'm questioning is how that road lays, I think where your the one that comes off Creighton Road goes over to that, I don't know where the, um, your starts, and I think it's, I see where the property line is going north, but I don't know, that's the part I'm gonna figure out, is we'll have to do some work to that road that was by the old football field.
Okay, yeah.
And we might even have to widen that approach in the, going on Creighton Road for semis to get in and out, because some semis will come in off that way, or my, my set of doubles will go out that way and that, oh, will be a we'll have to do, figure that out. But the surveyor's got pretty well marked, there's a couple orange stakes, I don't know if you've seen them. He's still trying to figure out the one over by the rail lines, only one he hasn't got marked.
Any other questions? And clearly, the council has indicated that they do want more specific drawings, so as soon as
Okay.
you've got those prepared, that you please do uh, submit them.
Yeah.
Um, what happened?
Probably better location. Have a location on the map too.
Oh.
So we have in our paper where it's gonna be located on the maps and.
Well, we're just gonna survey a little flat map of some sort of.
Yeah. He's still working on, working on, I think, coming back maybe tomorrow, he's got some work doing in the area, so.
So you're requesting a survey map?
Well, that's, yeah, just a better, so we have an idea of exactly where it's.
Yeah, we're trying, still trying to figure that out, cause of the distance.
Yeah.
I mean, there's from our, um, for one property line to the floodage is only eighty-four feet.
Okay.
So, and I've got about, I'm gonna have to probably go south a little bit because of the I think there's fifty-four foot between the dike and the loadout pad. And that gets me off of close to the road. And there's only three hundred and fifty bit, I think, from my dry plant to that water. Take a path of that, cause that dike is, or the containment's a hundred and fifty-five foot long.
Okay.
So Garrett, will you work with George and make sure that you get all the information then that?
Yeah, we're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the commercial building per, permit. Uh, and Jerry, you are refusing yourself from this, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so then, the superintendent report, I understand Dr. Pittman is out of town, but Carolyn, was there some, a message you wanted to share?
Um, yes, I was just going to uh, remind everyone that we will have our groundbreaking for the C T E wing this Thursday at three o'clock out there, if anybody wants to attend that. And of course, the first round of playoffs will be following that as well, out there, so um, pretty exciting stuff going on out there, three o'clock, there's a groundbreaking.
Five thirty is a football game.
Is, is the football game at five thirty?
Yes.
I'd heard that it was, but I'm glad you said for sure.
How important is the groundbreaking?
Well, no, the groundbreaking is really important, but she just mentioned, you know, the football games, you know, to make sure.
Can I, can I just mention one, one other thing in that timeframe? Our engineers are meeting landowners over on the railroad tracks on Fourth Avenue.
Yes.
Between.
I have a four o'clock appointment that day as well.
Uh, one thirty to five.
Oh, yeah.
That's the whole.
The timeframe.
Okay.
Busy. Busy, busy.
Yeah.
Lots of stuff going on for sure, okay, anything else, Carolyn?
I do not believe so.
Okay, that brings us to the Wall Economic Development Director Report, Kendall.
Um, HECO Development, we did uh, last Friday, held a breakfast, that was just an informational breakfast, and that she provided the food, and it was really good, and that was to inform businesses about the Bill Dakota Scholarship Program, which is a good program for businesses looking, recruit students who work for them, and hopefully keep them. A good program for businesses looking, recruit students who work for them and hopefully keep them for. It's a three-year program, but then maybe a lifelong employee or that to help with the workforce and keep some. Younger people in our community as well, and Danny Martin actually, um, presented all the Bill Dakota Scholarship information on that and. Went pretty good, we had a forum with people and hopefully the businesses that came learned a lot and we're gonna have a webpage. I'll explain more for the ones that weren't able to attend. Um, and then coming up, we're preparing for our annual meeting, which we set for November fifteenth. And that'll be here, um, in the Grand Ball. Um, you have one new board member position open and a couple of petition is coming for that, so there'll be an election. Um, as well as opting a new high school board member, um. We originally had our next regular board meeting set for tomorrow, but with the funeral dissertation we're going to schedule. Uh, for October twenty-fifth, next Wednesday at six P M.
Kendall, what, what time on the fifteenth, Wednesday, what time does the annual meeting start?
I believe it's six P M, but I needed to talk to my board about that at the October meeting, because it's my first year doing it, so. Should be good, moving all that, but you're all welcome to attend and I'll be getting right stories for that as well. Any questions? Thank you.
How was the Buffalo roundup today?
Well, that was pretty exciting, I didn't know all that was going on, um, Katie from the teamer and I went down to the. National Park and they were rounding up the Buffalo and. Um, kind of sorting through the herds and everything and I didn't realize they did that down there, but. We got some pictures that apparently are kind of confidential, so we need to get approval from them. Yeah, before we do anything with them, I don't know, we didn't know it was such a secret deal, but. It felt pretty secret once I got in there.
Yeah, that's, so.
Because we don't want it to become bigger than that, you say.
Like I didn't listen to this secret thing and I brought my big camera and everyone was like, what are you doing? We already told us to come down.
Well, I think it's a great way to, uh, demonstrate to the park, we're very interested in what they're doing and, um. That's a big event for them, I did not know it was highly secret either.
Was there school kids there?
No, it was just park rangers and, um.
They kind of where the school kids go off, that, not they did.
Yeah, today, I guess it was just like me and Katie and all the official people.
Good, I'm glad you did that. Thank you, okay, item number seventeen, uh, first reading of the twenty-three oh two ordinance for the. Twenty twenty-four budget appropriation, Stan is part of the budget committee, would you? Do you have any?
Yes, well, everybody, yeah, I got a copy of the last meeting. Uh, and really the only significant change in Carolyn, I'm afraid, that is on that. Amount of loans that we will receive month, an additional loan that we'll receive for the Fourth Avenue. And we're confident that we will move that, but therefore we will need less of our. Uh, cash that we have, and, uh, so that reduces that amount, so our ending balance. Will, will be about a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And there are a lot of things up in the area, we don't know exactly. When a project will be bid for sure, when it will start, when it will finish and. If we get a loan, or there'll be a payment in twenty twenty-four, or the first payment maybe twenty twenty-five, so. We, Carolyn has put the payment in, but we may not need it, so. I guess there's a lot of unknown, but I think. I guess I feel we should still go ahead and approve the first reading and. I don't know that we'll know a lot more by the next meeting, but Carolyn, maybe you can have something.
Well, I would just say that I always figure, I know on the high end of expenses. Hoping they don't come in that high and at least we budgeted for them, yeah. So I have plugged all those numbers in and, um. I would feel comfortable with you doing the first reading on it because. I can't see any changes, if it does change, it's gonna be changing during the budget year next year and it would. Just be less expenses coming out of the budget than, you know, so I would feel comfortable with you giving it first reading, I mean, plugged all. Covered all things that we have, the projects and all that that we have going in.
I'll make, uh, that motion, uh, that we approved with the first reading of, uh. The budget ordinance twenty-three dash oh two for the twenty twenty-four budget appropriation.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions?
There's, Carolyn, you might just refresh everybody's memory, then we'll have a second reading and then the final one will be approved at the.
Well, so the second reading is the final. Yep, at the November ninth meeting and then it gets, um, published and it's. I have to look at the timeline of the publication. Depending on the paper's schedule, of course, but we should have. It, it just has to be approved and in place by the thirty. Thirty, twenty-ninth of December, so the second reading will be the ninth. It'll go in the next week's paper, so it would be official like December fifth. So we have plenty of time. On your paperwork, the actual ordinance portion of the budget, I have those numbers in as. The first reading is going to be November second or November ninth, but I'll just make those changes for the next reading to just tweak them, so.
Tweak them ahead.
Yep.
So, okay, so everyone understand that, which is on the second page of that. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none then, all those who pay part of, uh, approving ordinance twenty-three oh two, twenty twenty-four budget appropriation, say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the treaty report.
I, we had, um, the benefit of the mayor asking for. Ms. Frankenstein's advice tonight, um, I just want to. Make the record very clear, uh, what's the notification requirements under South Dakota law are. Um, Ms. Frankenstein alluded at the end that she was. Um, referencing criminal case law, um, which I don't know. If mayor specifically asked for guidance regarding the criminal implications, um, of individual members of the council being. Uh, prosecuted.
Okay, Ms. Trax, the way this happened is that when I reached out to learn an appropriate. Way to amend minutes at your request due to a motion that Stan made. She then asked for the minutes and the agenda of the minutes that. Are the meetings that you had referenced, and when she did that. When, when she reviewed that information. And did recommend how to amend the most, or the minutes. Then she also noticed the ratification. And that's what actually led her here, so I don't have any idea where you're going with. Because I mentioned this to the, uh, the council at the last meeting that I had reached out to her. That she had indicated there was, uh, some bigger issue than just the minutes that we needed to address. I wouldn't be able to come close to answering any questions. She indicated to me she'd be going through here on her way to pier and that she would. Stop in and address those things, and when she did, she noticed some other things on the agenda tonight. So I have no idea where you're talking, what you're talking about, no, nothing about criminal or. I, I don't know where you're coming from at all, but you, you do not have to address that at this point, because that was not a concern.
Going to address it because that is how she concluded. When I see, when I cited the applicable civil law regarding meeting notification. She then said, well, I'm talking about criminal. And so that is why I find it necessary to distinguish if, if you had brought up to her.
I just indicated to you.
Okay, so then I don't know why she referenced that, but I found it necessary to address that. Because I am talking about the civil requirements for notice and I want this body clear. And I am going to reiterate what those requirements are. Proposed agendas for public meetings must be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. The purpose of providing advanced notice of the topics to be discussed at a meeting is to provide information. To the interested members of the public concerning the governing body's anticipated business. To provide information to interested members of the public concerning the governing body's anticipated business. Typically, the public body adopts the final agenda upon convening the meeting. This time, the governing body may add or delete agenda items and may also change the order of business. In two thousand twelve, the South Dakota Supreme Court affirmed a South Dakota Circuit Court decision. Which held that a preliminary agenda may be amended when the board takes action to formally adopt the meeting agenda. May be amended, that's within the twenty-four hours. See, will be Grant Dual School District twenty-five dash three. New items cannot be added after the agenda has been adopted. So when you call for a motion to adopt the agenda, it's seconded, it's voted on, it's approved. Now you can't add new items, prior to that, you can. For the South Dakota Supreme Court. Um.
And what was the date on that?
Two thousand twelve.
Okay.
Public bodies are strongly encouraged to provide twenty-four hours notice of all agenda items so as to be fair to the public. And to avoid dispute, for special or rescheduled meetings, the public bodies are to comply to the extent circumstances permit. In other words, posting less than twenty-four hours in advance may be permissible in emergencies. And emergencies is not defined, that's a matter of interpretation, so, um. Always, my advice is to give the public notice, it always has been, always will be, that should be. The, it's the public's business, it should be done in public. But to say that you cannot amend the agenda within twenty-four hours of when it was posted. Prior to the meeting is not true, so I'm just clarifying that. Now, uh, next item is why does that even matter? Um, and it matters because it's my understanding. That you are questioning whether the motion. To ratify the city's planning and zoning ordinance is legitimate. Because the city was forced to bring that motion under the Finance Officer's report. Concerning the planning and zoning ordinance. And why that was, uh, I will ask Carolyn. Carolyn, that meeting, um. Which would be the August third meeting, were you asked to put the planning and zoning ordinance? On the agenda as an individual and. Prior to the meeting. When anybody asks for something after the agenda has been set. I always direct them to the mayor because it's her agenda and. I, I've done it with Marty the same, he always asked me to do that, he said. Not to make any changes after forty-eight hours, that's been policy. Okay, so it's the city's agenda, it's not the mayor's, but were you asked to add? Prior to twenty-four hours before the meeting, were you asked to add that as an agenda item, that the planning and zoning board? Were you asked? I was asked and I gave direction, because I've done that for years, so I've set a precedence to do that and I don't sway from it. And was it the president of the council that asked you to add that agenda item? Yes. And did you in fact add that agenda item? No, because I don't, I directed him to contact the mayor. You did not add the agenda item even though you were asked to and, and did, were you told not to add it? Precedents that I always follow what the mayor says. And what did the mayor say? I'm asking you, in this case, it would have been Mayor Williams. Yes. What did she say with regard to the president of the council's request for you to add that agenda? You didn't ask her? No, I asked him to contact her about it. Okay, Rick, did you contact the mayor?
No, I've never had to contact the mayor in my twenty-six years of a council. To get an item on the agenda. I've always contacted the city finance officer, officer, whoever it was, and it got on the agenda.
This was because of the twenty-four hour.
I, I made this request fifty hours before the council meeting. It was in the forty, it was two hours before, it was fifty hours before the council meeting. So it was well within our timeline.
So we're not talking about twenty-four hours, so the law doesn't even come into place here, but. The record needs to reflect that the reason the president's request to place the planning and zoning ratification on the agenda. Was not in fact timely placed on the agenda is because you as mayor, unilaterally took it upon yourself. To void that request, is that correct? She was not contacted.
I followed.
She didn't, it was he contacted me and I've always had that with the mayor that I've had in place. That if any changes after they've set the agenda, they need to contact.
But this, this was in our timeline, this was fifty hours. So, so you can set the agenda, uh, arbitrarily before our forty-eight hour deadline.
It's happened before, once it's been set, after there's been discussion and Marty's the one that started this and I have just carried it through. So I think I'm calling on the council to address the situation because the president of the council. Directed the finance officer to place an item on the agenda fifty hours before the meeting. And it did not get placed on the item.
I do.
You're gonna have to.
I, I do.
Okay, the president, the president stated, I, I'm, we'll go with fifty hours, uh, if you need to send her. Clarification on that documentation, but the president stated, he, he, uh. Contacted the finance officer with a directive to put an item on the agenda fifty hours before the meeting and it was not placed on the agenda. And I think we as the council need to address protocol for placing items particularly from this council. On the agenda. And, and we don't need to take action on that tonight unless you want to, but I think that needs to be very clear. That if a member of this council directs the finance officer to place an item on the agenda, that item is placed on the agenda. And it's not with anyone's approval, unilateral approval. You keep kind of pointing to Mary and it's not Mary's. It's, it's not anyone's. And I have just carried it through because.
But I think, I think the point that that's being missed is, is that would be fine if. If Rick went to put that on the agenda and it was forty-six hours. But it was two hours prior to the window for the protocol that you follow, does that make sense?
Well, yes, I mean, that's, it was his thing of forty-eight hours, I mean. But sometimes he would be in, in the middle of the afternoon or whatever and he said, okay, the agenda has been set. And then I'm preparing to get it sent out to everybody, the packet, so I mean, I guess I don't watch the clock and think, okay, well. You know, it's forty-eight hours, so no, I've never done a time clock with it, that's just.
Because that is the process, she does need to get the packet out then. Because that is the process, she does need to get the packet out then.
So what's the timeframe that that needs to be set? Because if it's not being followed at forty eight, what does it need to be set?
So for forty eight hours. Are you saying that that would be six thirty at night? And we expect her to stay here so that if any one is gonna call in and adjust.
I think we let her tell us what the timeframe is and then we.
Well, don't expect me, I was only following and because it's always been done since Marty was mayor and. It's never been an issue to be brought up again until now, so I just continue following.
Well, I I I think, I think. When I asked for an item to be put on the agenda fifty hours before the meeting. And then I and then I assumed it's gonna be put on the meeting and Carolyn said, uh, talk to Mary about that, I I said. You know. That's not something I've done, I didn't really respond to that, I had no intention to talk to Mary about it, I don't need Mary's permission to get an item on the agenda. When I'm in at three o'clock in the afternoon, fifty hours before the meeting.
Rick, excuse me, but you didn't come in the office, you called.
I called.
Yeah, so I don't know how we're going to track the timeframe.
The thing is, Mary is so. She follows the rules.
Marty always did too.
I know.
I got reprimanded if I didn't.
I know, but, okay, so she. Ratify or o- okayed the agenda forty six hour. No, it would have been fifty two hours earlier. Then Thursday, so she she did it at three thirty, same three thirty in the afternoon. But that's fifty two hours before the meeting. And I know you've gotta get home, but. I really think the president of the council should be without Mary's okay. Should be able to put something on the agenda, I mean, he is the president. And you weren't even following the procedure that Marty set up. Because according to you, it was forty eight hours, so you weren't following that.
That was his thing, he said forty eight hours, but I mean, it could sway from that, but we'd come in and. We'd go over the agenda or. I would send it to him, he'd review it and he'd send it back and he said, okay, this is the agenda. And I assumed it was, I mean, it was always set at that time, it could be ten o'clock in that morning, but he said. And I did make a change because there was time to do that and I sent it out and I was told that was not to happen, I was supposed to always. Reach out to him or have whoever asked for an agenda item to be placed on there and that's why I asked him. Can you reach out to Mary?
So at the end of the day, uh uh um, what we've established is that there actually isn't a. Protocol, there isn't a timeframe, it's just that. Everyone for some advanced period is supposed to. Run their items through the mayor and they may be vetoed at any point, well, to sixty, seventy, who knows how many hours. There's not a set amount of time, it varies, could be ten in the morning, could be three thirty in the afternoon. And and that's what I'm concerned about here and that's what I think our council needs to really firm up. And I, I'm Carolyn, I'm not jumping on you, I'm just wanting to clarify something. When Marty said if somebody brought some after he okayed the agenda. And you put something on, was it from a council member or was it from?
Would be either.
Yeah.
He said if if there's to be any change, I. Need to be known.
I had always understood the rule was forty eight hours prior to four thirty. Of the, that's six thirty, so you. You would, if the meeting is today or let's say it's Thursday, Tuesday by four thirty, you needed to. That's when the agenda is established.
You know, I mean.
Otherwise, why we've talked about forty eight hours?
Do we need to extend that so you have time to get the agenda?
Yeah, and I don't know at this point. No sense in beating a dead horse to death. I just think it needs to be made very, very clear. If council person wanted to have an agenda, it gets put on the agenda.
And I.
We'll establish what time that's gonna be. And we will all follow that. And I again am gonna reach out and find out who. Whose responsibility it is to set the agenda. If that's even an appropriate assumption on my part. From what I understood, I thought that was one of the responsibilities of a mayor.
Why do we have forty eight hours to begin with, if you if you just follow your own rules?
No, I'm talking about who sets, who says the agenda is established. And then we need to figure out what time that is gonna be, that after that point it won't, there won't be additions or. Corrections or revisions, so.
I think that's what Steph is saying, we need to be more precise, but we've gotta give you the timeframe that you need to get it all. There's the other way you're asking her to stay later.
Yeah, and I know we also have the confusion if it's, well, if it's a Tuesday meeting like tonight. Has to be in by Sunday.
Sunday, so she's in here working on Sunday.
But usually you try to get it out by Friday in.
I do try.
But in reality. I don't know how we rule it, we need to. So we need to get it clarified till we don't argue and make it clear that nobody can. If you follow those particular rules, mayor, nobody can say, well, nothing, put that on the agenda.
And I did not say, I'm not putting it on the agenda, I did not say that, did I say that to you?
No.
No.
I said, I want this on the agenda, you said.
I said, did you have you talked to Mary about?
And I said, no, I haven't, and that was the end of the conversation.
And I just assumed then you would reach out to her.
I never, I've never had to do that. I should be able to get an item on the agenda, normal citizens can get on the agenda. Meeting after meeting twelve times to talk about attorney's fees. You know, and just write on on the request attorney's fees. But I in the future will uh appear in the office and have a written statement to ask for an agenda item. Mid-afternoon, uh, so you have time, but I think.
Well, I think we need to establish that, I'm gonna seek some more information, we'll come back to the next meeting and we'll set protocol. According to what that timeframe needs to be and we're gonna be cognizant of her time.
Tonight, it's only twenty four hours, we established forty eight hours.
It was twenty four hours and I've known that and it was always twenty four hours with uh date. It was Marty's thing and.
I know Marty's not here.
Well, I know that, but until somebody brings something up to change it, I'm gonna follow. The way I have been doing it until it gets brought up and so now the discussion is being had. So I mean, I'm, I'll follow whatever, but I'm just explaining why. I was doing the process like I was because that's the way I was directed and. Until I'm undirected or told differently, I'm gonna continue.
But but that is a good point, the law requires twenty four hours. And it it, you know, yes, that that sometimes means somebody's last minute, twenty four, twenty five hours. Uh, is gonna inconvenience somebody, but look, that is what the law requires.
So the reason Marty explained why he wanted that was because then the council has time to review. The agenda, everything that goes with it, he didn't feel that twenty four hours gave them enough time.
Well, I think we all agree.
And that's why it was indicated to do the forty eight, so I'm just saying.
So we could stay with the forty eight, determine a specific.
We just need to be more clear.
Yes.
If it's six thirty meeting then. Maybe it needs to be. So it doesn't fall at six thirty, or well, if it's needed at six thirty. Yeah, so maybe it needs to be fifty two zones. It's established by two thirty in the afternoon, I don't know.
And I can get, yeah, I can get that timeline and so can o- other council members. You know, if 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 it's more convenient for Carolyn uh at two thirty, I I will get it to her. In her office. And write.
And I think the weekend be clarified as well.
Should be business hours then, shouldn't it, because I mean, you put an agenda Friday night.
Well, I think we can all kind of agree on what, just so we all know in writing and.
Okay, so we'll bring a polished politic back to the next meeting and get that established. Okay, is that all right with everyone? Okay, put some thought into it, okay, all right.
Fantastic, okay, uh, moving on to my next item, which a little bit tied that one in. Status of our ratification of planning and zoning ordinance, um. So uh. Mayor indicated that the reason she was in touch with Sarah Frankenstein was because. Uh, she had concerns about the motion being made and ratified the zoning ordinance. On the August third agenda, which is the one we just discussed, that the individual agenda item. Was not placed on the agenda even though it was asked fifty plus hours prior, uh. But. The agenda and going back to the law on the matter, which I read previously. The purpose of providing advanced notice of the topics to be discussed at a meeting. Is to provide information to interested members of the public concerning the governing bodies anticipated business. Uh, so that August third agenda included the item. Review of comp plan and schedule for starting zoning ordinance process. As a member of the public, you know there is going to be a review of comp plan. And a schedule for starting zoning ordinance process. And it's general as to what. The zoning ordinance process discussion is going to include. But you do know, we're talking about the comp plan and the zoning ordinance process. Um, so at that August third meeting, that the request by. Uh, Mr. Houston to put that agenda item was bypassed. And that item was not placed as its own individual item, um. We've discussed, there was the option to amend the agenda and add that item. Even though it was in within twenty four hours because you can do that under the law, um. But. Rick chose not to do that and Rick, could you tell us why you did not move to amend the agenda?
Well, since I I couldn't. With over fifty hours notice, I couldn't get it on the agenda. Then I noticed in reading the agenda, the. The zoning ordinance was on the agenda in Ca- Carolyn's uh section. And I thought, well, I'm ready to go and and I think we should do this and and uh uh. I thought ma- maybe I can get it in in there.
And what ultimately caused you prior to the meeting not to make a motion to amend the agenda? To add that item that you would previously request?
Well, I was never gonna do do that, but when I came in, Mary said. Maybe you could bring that up right at that point. And and I was ready to go anyway, I I mean, I I I I thought that it was very, a a very important. Uh, we talked about the importance of ratifying our our zoning thing, I I think our zoning. Uh, issues are very important and so then I pitched it in the uh uh. In in a pass unanimously.
So so the mayor in fact, just to be clear, directed you to bring that item.
I invited him.
Yeah. I, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, are you now suggesting that that was an inappropriate juncture? To bring up his motion about ratification of the order?
I did not think he was going to make a motion, I thought he was going to discuss. Uh, what he was trying to accomplish there. So I did not, I invited him to to be part of the conversation, did not indicate that he shouldn't make a motion at that point.
Okay, um, based on this record, uh, I don't know what. Stage of ratification of the ordinance we're in, but I think enough. Doubt has been cast on what we've done, I would advise the council. To direct the finance officer to put ratification of the ordinance. On the next agenda as its own item and we start from there. And I, I mean, it's very unfortunate, we have to do that again, but. I I I think to make a clearer record, we're trying to make, we've we've got a big muddle. Now, and I I think we need to start over.
Uh, you know, one thing I I'm wondering, Ki- uh Carolyn. You know, we've already, the councils already indicated they would like to ratify our zoning ordinance and and I don't think it'd hurt. But also, uh, we have the map. It would I, it would be nice if we could do them both.
Exactly, not go and do this partial that we've got going here.
No, I I mean, I I I think that thing we talked about to- tonight, if we could kind of clean everything up. And and get our map in, which has come together really well. And 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 one that Carolyn and and the mayor signed and then we ha- have a zoning map, I I mean, I I. Uh, think we would uh clean up things a bit and I I think it's worth going.
And the planning and zoning has already discussed that and got that well on its way, so.
Uh, the planning and zoning have, I'm sorry, got what, Mary? They, there are they doing the map or?
Yes.
Yeah, we I I mean, we pretty much have a map, which is.
Okay.
Fantastic, and 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 uh uh Jennifer Seatham has been very, very helpful. And Kaylee Snyder.
And we've got the districts in there that. Um, are referred to, we made the comprehensive plan and the map match. Is that a good way?
That's what, yeah, I I mean, that's.
And we have an ordinance here, it's that it's too quick because that happened yesterday morning that we worked with this. And uh, the things that were pointed out to us tonight, I think are legitimate. It's a better way of saying it. And so I think this is where we're at, I think this is what really will suffice our our issue.
If, how how long you think the the map's gonna take? I'm I'm not pushing you, but get it done, no, I'm.
Well, we have the draft.
We were ready to go.
We were given the draft, but now they need to make it become official as far as. Putting a signature line for mayor and myself on there and.
But 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 if we could tune this document up and then add. An appropriate meeting when we have. The map ready to go, if we could ratify our zoning ordinance and our map. With notice to the public.
We can't really ratify the map because it's, we know that's not, we already know the ordinances have been. Read and published and all that, so I guess.
Our next council meeting is when? Nine, our next planning and zoning meeting is November first. There's an eight day difference there, so we can take this back to planning and zoning, get it. Sniff that, but with, put it together, right?
Yeah.
And get it approved, bring it back to the council on November ninth. Get this publicized that we're out there and that it's coming to the council. And I think what you're saying is exactly right, Rick.
And 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 I'm I'm ratifying both, we've already voted to ratify our zoning organs and but but. Uh, uh, the planning and zoning meetings have have been very helpful, uh, we need need to. Pursue the map, and if we could do them both at the same time, that'd be awesome.
Make total sense, way more sense.
Didn't she say that the map needed to be attached to that?
Well, somehow we're gonna get punched in here so that it's inserted so that we.
Not stapled.
Not gonna be attached to or stapled or anything. I think that's.
Well, it'll be a smaller copy that will fit in there. It'll just be the beginning of it and the official map will be on the wall and all the changes can be.
Be attached and.
The changes were done. That would be the proper word, I think.
Okay, so this is encouraging, I'm hearing, at the November ninth meeting. We expect possibly that the map is done subsequent to the November planning and zoning commission meeting. And we can move anew to ratify. The existing ordinance complete with the newly developed map.
I I I think we should do it. I I think that's clean and and. We spent a lot of time on this and and. And and the councils indicated they want to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to that clarity for the council and in our plans moving forward. Very helpful for me as city attorney. And I have one other item. I submitted pursuant to Councilman Anderson's motion. At the. August third meeting. That minutes be submitted to me. To reflect my corrections. Pursuant to that motion, I. Submitted my corrections. I had asked Carolyn for the text of that motion. And it was right during when we were going to the Supreme Court. I didn't get the text of it until the minutes came out, so I. Was a little later getting my. Corrections submitted because I had to wait for the official minutes to come out. To see the text of that motion, but so I submitted them to the council.
Today.
Emailed them up.
Today, was that what you said today?
Yes.
Corrections today.
Yep, and there had been one. Change made, revision made, which was acceptable, but it was insufficient. So I just added to the one that had been made. And it's only deleting inaccurate information.
Okay, do you have sent in Anderson's motion in front of you?
Well, I would never send it, but I have the minutes. In front of me, which the the text of the minutes.
Okay.
Was. Motion by S. Anderson, second by Welsh, that the minutes from the August third meeting be read and amended to reflect Stephanie Trask's corrections. And sent to her for review. Motion carried.
And that's what we did.
Uh, no, the. My corrections have not been reflected until I sent them to you.
But we did, Carolyn did exactly what this motion said. And what you're talking about is revision and the motion said review.
Uh, no, the the motion said read and amended amended. To reflect Stephanie Trask's correction amended. And I've sent those amended corrections that I I feel. Match this motion, the text of this motion.
And that's how this conversation started, and that's when I reached out. To South Dakota Public Alliance was to find out how to amend motion. Our minutes that occurred. Five meetings ago, because that's very uncommon. And we followed what this motion said, which was to send to you and allow you to review.
Uh, the the motion says. Read and amended to reflect, which we did.
The correction.
No, no.
We did read and amend, and that's.
No, amended to reflect Stephanie Trask's corrections.
Which you.
I sent my corrections today. They're not, they're not reflected in the minutes that that you had sent out, and I advised you. When you sent them, I said, this is not adequate. Please send the text of the motion that was made, because I was not here when that motion was made. That was never sent to me.
I did send it.
You you did not.
Miss.
I I got it from meeting minutes.
Miss Trask, I object to you. Correcting our finance officer. If she's indicated to you that she has sent those, I. Am not going to accept you criticizing her as one of our employees.
Criticizing. If she sent them, I did not receive them.
We gave you the opportunity to send us your revisions. You did not do them in a timely manner, and we moved on. She followed the. Motion precisely.
Uh, the motion precisely is read and amended to reflect my corrections. The motion has not been followed.
And your. Items that you brought up during that meeting were reviewed and reflected in those minutes.
Amended to reflect my correction.
So this conversation is over. Do you have anything else to report?
Is the council satisfied with the. Action that was taken in response to Councilman Anderson's motion?
So I guess I'm a little confused over here.
We just sent them today. What you're saying is is what Carolyn needs to do with what you sent today. Will satisfy the initial. Motion.
Correct.
And she had indicated that she would have those to us before the last.
No, I I did not indicate that. I did not. I never indicated that.
Well, Stephanie, I I've read that and I get. I see your objection to. And this must have been in the minutes, I assumed the red, this if Love's loses concern was expressed by Attorney Trask at the last meeting. Well, that seems like an add-on. You know, that that wasn't. Quoted from this meeting, it's referenced, it's in the minutes referencing of the last meeting, and and I get why. You know, that's embellishing moments. It wasn't, it didn't happen at the meeting. I don't get the next thing. Maybe you can explain it to me. Hot gas trash, if the zoning ordinance has changed now, wouldn't love to see it as being done after the fact. Trask responds, no, I just don't understand that.
We went back and read, I went back and reviewed the minutes. And Katie, we were sitting there because you can kind of unders. Misinterpret, I guess, what people are saying or whatever. And made the corrections as we understood the recording. And we watched the recording.
Okay, well, it's still out of context, my response, no, it was not that I didn't think that Loves would know about a public record. So that that's just, it's just inaccurate. And if we're going to amend the minutes to reflect the corrections. That I advised, I want that stricken. It's inaccurate.
Okay, I don't have the document in front of me, but I can tell you the exact. Hour, minute, second on that videotape that your answer was no.
Which is fine. We don't need a set of minutes. That take my answer no and put it in the context that I told this council, I didn't think Loves would read a public record. When all this council's deliberations are public record, the subject litigation from the South Dakota Supreme Court, that's ridiculous. And and so pursuant to the motion. The amendment that I, the the corrections that would be amended to these minutes are to strike that. And I don't have anything else on them. In closing. The South Dakota Boards and Commissions. Offers. State of South Dakota Bureau of Human Resources offers a two-point-five-hour class. On the earth of taking meeting minutes for a nominal fee. The course covers subjects such as preparing to take minutes, the scope and focus of minutes. How to take minutes at a board meeting, recording action items, transcribing minutes. Administrative duties and accountability. And I thought. This is a good juncture, since this has become a problematic area for us. That maybe we think about sending some of our staff. To a training like that, and it says a nominal fee, I don't know how much that fee is. But I I think it's worth looking into.
Okay, anything else, Susan? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next on the agenda. Is the mayor's report. And what I wanted to share was the fact that. We have a lot of good stuff going on in our neighborhood, don't we? We have garages being attached to governor homes being built. On Stone Drive, we have a new home going in. And in Echo Valley, we are building the street. I understand we've got two lots committed to out there and a lot more interest. So it's really exciting to see things come to fruition. And also the airport is moving right along and they've completed the asphalt part of that, so. Seeing what our dollars do for us in terms of reality or real things is very exciting at this point.
I remember I thought Echo Valley's, I realized for granted that they. Wasn't their final. A couple of days ago.
Yes.
So have they approached anybody with an extension?
Well, that would be true.
Did that include, because they did ask for the fourteen day extension.
I think it was fifth that reached. I think, I don't have that.
Well, if it was the fifth and there's fourteen, then that would be this Thursday would be the final. Right?
Plus rain delay, which I have had, but yeah.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm sure they have it for five days.
I see their boots every day. I see their boots every day.
I do know that.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I, Tim had reached out asking what in our next, what our November council meetings were, because he was coming. For a Echo Valley update and I gave him the two dates and he asked to be put on ninth. That's more than two weeks away, I guess.
But we can reach out if that's what you. I know they've got trucks lined up to start hauling millings. And obviously, they would get somebody stuck so bad out there right now. It's unreal, so they wouldn't dare be pulling those in there, so that's something that's beyond their control, but we can check on it, stand for sure.
The wind tomorrow should help.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the new deputy, our new sergeant, Amanda Swanson, reached out to me and indicated. That Sheriff Mueller would like to come to law for a public meeting. He would especially like to meet with council and then the public. And I had Katie check the calendar and there's a November first and November eighth or a number. Fourteenth that is open. And the suggested times are going to be like five thirty, six o'clock or six thirty. So my first question. To you, first of all, would you like to meet with Sheriff Mueller? I know he's been going to other communities and visiting with them and with the new deputy. Our new lieutenant and some of the lieutenant deputies. To talk about law enforcement in the area of law. Is this something that the council would like to do? They wanted to do it outside of a council meeting. And invite public entities. I was thinking of the chamber board directors, the economic development. Even Farm Bureau might be people we could reach out.
What were the dates you?
Well, there's three choices. I told her, so she's, I gave those as being open dates. She's gonna get back to me. With what one will work after I brought it to the council to see if this is something he actually wanted to do.
If I might ask, what were those dates again?
Okay, November first.
Which is, give me days, not just.
Oh, that's a Wednesday. Sorry, I'll get my calendar out.
I know, I have one.
Okay, and then November eighth. And that's a Wednesday. So then November fourteenth is a Tuesday. And then she wondered what time would work best, would a five thirty is a six or six thirty? What would work best for you?
Mary, did they give any, indicate how long the meeting would be?
Shall we tell them we want it to be an hour or less?
I'm sure they're busy. I mean, I'm sure, yeah, I think that'd be.
Isn't that plenty of?
Well, you know, if we if we met at five thirty and I'm just throwing that out there. You know, if it wrapped up at six thirty, if they want to run a little over.
They could, but but officially we would be, and I don't. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure how this works. I've just seen news clips of. Mueller being in other communities, so I guess I don't know the format, but. So you're thinking five thirty is a good time? Does anybody else feel that way? Okay, five thirty, and I will let her know. And have her get back to me and I'll get those dates out to you then right away. Is that fair enough? Okay. And then I wanted to share that Pennington County Highway Department had a meeting. With rural. Folks regarding the gravel roads. All five commissioners were at that meeting. I don't know the last time that that might have happened, but that was interesting that they wanted to be here and visit with those folks. And another thing that I had asked Carolyn to do was, we videoed that meeting and it's on the city. Website so that anyone that wasn't able to be here, and there were about, I'm gonna say forty-five, fifty people here. Anyone that wasn't able to be here that night. Because of the pending storm could see that, view that video. So that meeting, that was the second one. It went much better than the first one did, which was. Yeah, the second one went much better, for sure. I wanted you to be aware of that. Okay. Is there any problem with them, with us posting that for people to see?
People are sure interested.
Yeah.
Especially the, aren't they abandoning maintenance on some road?
Well, they are, but we got some of that turned around, so. We learned that trucks count for a lot of cars, and so when they were only treating a truck like a car. Then a lot of roads would go into minimum, and then when they found out. It, how many cars a truck equals, well, that got changed.
Oh, thank goodness, people were upset.
Yes, so there was good input, good conversation, and it made a difference. And they also determined that. The gentleman Colton Tinas is doing a great job down here. Okay, anything else on that? Any questions? Okay, moving on then, Carolyn. Would you take the lead then on the? Lead, lead report or lead report?
So the DA and the father. And maybe Garrett can explain their reasoning. They're wanting to know. If there's any lead pipes in homes. And they asked for a spreadsheet that included locations of all of our meters. Which we provided to them, and so now. They want to know which ones of those addresses may have lead pipes in it and. Something that they suggested, rather than our public works having to go to every house. Is to provide some kind of incentive. Is to provide some kind of incentive to get people to do this themselves. And so. There's been several ideas I've seen on the lister of what people will maybe doing for incentives. Something to me would be to just offer a discount to their billing, um, rather than. Giving them money out for doing what, you know, we do have some time with it, but. Garrett and I visited a little bit, thinking, you know, to start out kinda high and then as the months go that we don't get a lot of response. Then, you know, that. Uh, production goes down as well, so, didn't know what your thoughts were on that.
So is this for replacing all?
No, it's just to, it's just, they're pretty much doing a survey to see, so they have a survey online that you can go in and. The age of your house and everything and click it and, and then, can't remember if they want to sample or not, but. You know, I think the faster we get it done is, the better it's gonna be. You know, you can send it in by mail or you can do it online, so they're just trying to figure out, cause you know, lead. Will get rid, and the older towns have, some have. Mines made out of lead or coated with lead, so they just wanted to make sure that they can find out. Which the city doesn't have any mains that are led, and I, and I don't know if there's.
Garrett, you suspected there are many lead pipes in law?
I don't think so, no, I've been in almost every house, the basement, we'll change the meters out, I've never. Noticed any lead, it's all copper packs. So, but it's just, you know, the DA and R wanna, wanna get it done.
Would, would they take a sample? I'll remember for sure.
I looked it up on the website, it.
They, it explains how they can test for what kind of material they have.
Oh yeah, cause if you, yeah, it's, if you go in and you see where your service line is or whatever comes out, you know. If you scratch it and it's gold, it's copper brass or whatever, and then if it's soft. And malleable when you scrape it, it's lead.
Well, that's pretty easy.
It's, it's, yeah, I think it's only gonna take like five minutes to do.
And then, so, it'd, it'd be, you'd have the meter and, and then it would be the water line going into the house.
Yep, yep, and then the, the link is just, it, it's good, it shows you how. I haven't re- looked at it lately, so I don't remember for sure, but it's simple from what I remember. And then if they don't do that. Then we, or if they don't know how to do it, you know, or they can't tell, then we'll have to go in and. And do it, which, you know, elderly people or someone might see that, but.
How old's Albert?
That's all like case by case. But I just think it'd be, you know, to get it done and get it done fast would be a good deal, and I think the way, you know. Start out with a pretty good discount on their water bill, so they get it done fast and the longer it takes you, the less you get. If I gotta come over, it's a bad deal.
Garrett, you test my waters, my pipes got lead?
Go look.
Okay, you're always giving me that water bottle, huh?
Um. Yeah, yeah, yours is lead.
Is it?
Lead and copper, but I don't.
That explains a lot.
I'd have to look it up and see, I don't think, there isn't much lead in any of the ones, the samples that I, that you guys do.
My thinking was to um, to get this information out. Would be to do a postcard mailing, so to speak, that would also then include. The link to the website for them to go off there to see how it's done. Um, and when this gets mailed out, I'm not gonna say that. You know, we give them this discount that to get it done in a month, I'm thinking in a couple of months would be the first timeframe. Those things we want there.
Would have known.
Um, and then, you never know, when they get the card, they, they might have life going on right then, you know. So give them a couple of months to get it done and let them know that there would be that discount offered to them.
Yeah, we don't know for sure, the deadline. Didn't have the deadline, and they weren't needed to be done, they're just been working on that. Yeah.
We wanted to know.
Yeah, no. Get ahead of it.
So, don't know if you wanna think about this a little bit as far as how to create an incentive. If you like the idea of offering a discount to their water bill, I mean. To me, it would be the easiest and especially for accounting purposes. Rather than paying this money out, we just aren't gonna see the revenue coming in for water bills, you know, so it just.
So, like.
To water bill.
Say, if you, you get your, if you participate in the survey and test your pipes. How much is a water bill? I should know.
The minimum is a hundred and seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
So, do you have a number in mind?
I was thinking the first round would be twenty-five dollars.
And then it'll be like differently less and less from that, twenty-five would be the most.
Unless you think of a better enough, I think, I just was.
Carolyn, how, how long did you wanna run?
Well, the first round, I thought, like I said, by the time I get the bill sent or the notification sent out. Give them like a two month timeframe from that date. And then the next month would be twenty dollars, the next month would be fifteen, go down in like five dollar increments. Depending on the, I'll have to look again to see what that date is of when it needs to be in, um. But I wanna say it's the middle of next year, so. After we depleted all the incentives, then by next spring.
So Carolyn, three months?
No, I'm thinking six months to deplete twenty-five dollars.
Then are you gonna try, Garrett has to do it?
I'm going to. Won't be proud of it.
Yeah. I don't know.
At least he's on.
Say, and if Garrett has to do it, then we're gonna add five dollars to your bill, or no, I don't.
And I think we just need to put on there if you're unable to or confused or whatever, but.
Reach out.
Be more than happy to do it.
Okay.
Just that might kinda help, but especially people. You know, like you said, elderly people might need help, but they're gonna be home for you to help, you know, someone that's working. It's gonna be hard to make that contact.
I, I, I think it is, this is a small thing. I just think maybe start at thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah. One more incentive.
If we get closer to the deadline and then we figure out when it needs to be in, then we can. Make sure we give us a little room for the people that don't. You know, send it in, so not like going to the last minute and then.
And, and, and maybe, maybe you could run it, just some idea, I like numbers. Maybe you could run thirty for two months and then, what would the next step be? Twenty-five for two months and then twenty for two months, cause nobody's gonna do anything for five bucks. What's this do to your water budget? I mean, how many households you talking about, it's like, everybody misses it at thirty dollars. It's like four hundred and.
Well, some of those are commercial.
Yeah.
Um, I would say there's like maybe three hundred and seventy residents.
So it's just residents that have to do this?
Well, no, I'm just saying the commercial. Yeah, I'm, no, and then three hundred and seventy to four hundred and thirty, those would be, that number would be commercial. No, everybody needs to do it.
Everybody, okay.
Eric, everybody needs to do it. So we, we'd be happy if we got a hundred percent participation, which.
We have to.
What?
We have eventually have to.
We do?
Everybody has to, yeah.
Gonna have to, whether the customer does it or whether Garrett.
That's why we wanna, you know, give them an incentive to get it done right away, because it has to be done, it's like. There's some of that.
Wow, okay.
Okay, so do you need, okay, do you want them to proceed with this?
Yeah.
With an incentive? Do you need uh, the emotion or consent?
With money.
Oh, it's a money, yes, okay, correct. Okay, so would I have a motion for, to allow, um.
So, was the, was the number amount then gonna be thirty for two months, then twenty five for two months? Maybe meet again sometime and we know where. The actual date, you know, that has to be in, and then, and then maybe everybody has an idea what.
Right, I can bring it back to the.
You have time, you think we have?
That's only two weeks.
The next meeting?
The next, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to put this out to you to see if you're interested in doing this process, um, before I start.
This is a law, people have to, have to, yeah, okay, so there's no opting out, no, okay. Good to know.
And I can get it on a spreadsheet and so you can actually see how.
Okay, so that's information only then, all right?
Yes, and then, um, my next item was, there was, um. I submitted the letter to you, um, and I wanted to bring up names, if not, impossible. Um, about a water bill adjustment, I included how our ordinance reads for that, and, um. Wanted to let you know, to point out that, it reads that it would be half of the bill. With the minimum deducted, so, you know, it's four hundred and thirty-one dollars, you take the minimum off, that's gonna be three hundred and. Twenty-four dollars and forty cents and half of that's gonna be a hundred and sixty-two twenty that they would receive credit on.
I would make that motion, I'd say.
Okay.
So are we adjusting, and I'm, I'm fine with it, everyone's gonna ask you how many times this happened. But it says excluding plumbing fixtures, so.
Right, and that's why I shared the ordinance with you guys to, you determine, so I don't have to speak on it, so you can figure it out yourself.
Does it, does it happen very often?
In my timeframe, I think there's been two other times that we've made an adjustment on the water bill.
And I think it would have been resolved had somebody been residing there, obviously, they would have known, so.
Oh, okay, so, did I have a motion?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Someone's moved.
Know that I didn't get a.
Stan.
Stan second.
Okay, and Stan is second then, Mike, would you repeat your motion, please?
I would make a motion that we adjust the water rate to, what was the total one?
One sixty.
One sixty-two twenty.
One sixty-two forty.
Okay.
I mean, that's the credit they're gonna get.
Right.
The credit.
That's the credit.
Okay, so Mike has moved that the water bill be adjusted with a hundred and sixty-two twenty credit.
Credit the water bill, a hundred and sixty-two twenty.
Okay, and it's been seconded, any more questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to, oh, one last thing. While I was at, while we were at South Dakota Municipal Alert League, we were recognized as a bronze. Twenty twenty-three Safety and Loss Control Award, you all got that? How do we get that?
There's a form, you have to submit uh, an app, say one application, so. You have to have a safety uh, policy in place, you have to have handbook policy in place. There's just, um, the guys, they have to attend their classes, which they're M Shaw.
Yeah.
M Shaw that usually can be figured. Counts for that, um, just kind of a criteria. To get that.
Probably would have got silver if I wouldn't have cut my finger.
So it's kind of the public work?
I don't know, I'm just kidding.
Public Works is who's earning this? Pretty much, and then you're reporting it, so it gets submitted, and I see that. Um, over the years, Wall has received twenty bronze awards, so you're being very consistent, Garrett, congratulations. And one time we got a silver, so can we try for more silvers? Don't cut your finger.
They have changed the criteria for that.
Oh, great, just when we get there. Okay, Public Works, tell us about your sewer.
Um, the other day, someone noticed, um, some water down on Sewer Lagoon, a little badlands. Uh, so we went down there and, and uh, I, we have a leak somewhere, and I think it's been leaking. For years, because there's. It just, it's saturated everywhere, and you know, when they lay pipe in, they lay it in pea gravel. And so if you have a leak, like, I don't know if you remember the water leak. Across the street over here, it follows the gravel and it was coming into your building, so that it just fills up and. Finally it's so full, I think it's come to the surface and we're having a really hard time figuring out where it's coming from, so.
Do they have some sort of uh, piece of equipment that can help?
I'm gonna call, uh, tomorrow to South Dakota Rural Water, they have, they have like a smoke.
Yeah.
Uh, deal, you put a big, it's like a Honda motor with a fan on it, and they add extra oil. And so it'll push it down in there, usually it'll come out, and if not, we come up with another plan where we'll uh. Plug each end and pressurize it, cause we've exposed like. Hundred feet of it, every joint. Cause it has to be, cause it's not pressurized, it's all free flow, so it has to be like, it wasn't put together all the way. You know, so it's just kinda leaking out of the bottom, and I think it's just, so that's why it's just so tough to find, but yeah. I will call them. South Dakota Rural Water, they have like a smoke detector, they call it, and, or we can. Isolate in between and we have enough, enough joints exposed that the air should, you know, bubble up in the waters.
Look for bubbles?
Look for bubbles. So what I did, and you know, we used our mini and then, I, I got Todd over there with his two foot bucket. We got more accomplished in half an hour than I did in a day, so. So hopefully we get it found.
Which I was gonna say too, I noticed that maybe, was it yesterday, they were shutting off water in the rural park?
Oh, they were draining, draining it.
Sprinklers.
I noticed yesterday morning, early. Um, a lot of water coming directly across the street from Dairy Queen, probably a little more to the west. But it had a lot of white residue.
Oh, you got a leak or something going?
Well, that's probably, we shut sprinkler system off. Um, and I think that just kinda, it drains back to that, a low point by that picnic table there.
Yep.
And so I think it's just kinda seeping, okay, you know, it's going down and seeping, so that's why we were, I noticed that too, so that's why we put. We have like a little relief valve, you can put it in there and it'll drain water out of the system.
I didn't wanna tell you another leak.
Yeah, I did notice that, so.
Okay, anything else?
Um, we spent a lot of time cleaning up the drainage ditches through town, and I think this last rain, it. It did a really good job, we had time to town. Didn't have any, any backups or anything, so. Um, and I did get a quote for a cab, track, skid steer, I sent the, the quote to Carolyn.
I did share that to.
Well, that's, I'll get it over there later, but he, and I just kinda wanted to ask you guys, and I know we did get it out there now. Just think about, do we wanna sell the skid steer outright, or do we wanna trade it in? Um. I think they offered us like twenty-seven thousand to trade it in, and it's probably worth maybe thirty-five?
I think that's gonna be your best bet, otherwise you're.
The trade in?
Yeah.
Now it's.
Me too.
That way it's gone.
Yeah, it's so clean, boom.
Okay. Well, it's just little guys there and then we'll bring it next meeting.
What is, uh, so did they just give you pricing or is the availability the right there?
Uh, they have one there.
Really?
Yeah, boy, that'd be great.
Yeah.
They said, we'll be on the way till the next quarter, we got some new ones coming out.
No, thanks. Right? Yeah, that'd be.
And in two thirty.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And then it's a track.
It's a track one, yeah.
Do the, do the tracks last very long?
Yeah, they last quite a while, you know, depending on what we do with it, we're not really too hard on them, and. You know, and I've heard people that say their tracks are good in snow, tracks aren't, but there's like two different kind of tracks, I guess. There's ones with different pads, and then there's one with like pedals.
So I've seen skids are stuck, I've never seen. So I've seen skids are stuck, I've never seen one with tracks stuck.
Yeah, when we, you know.
Like the Boda, they let us.
Use that Boda, yeah, I would.
They do pretty well. And they're really good, I mean, as long as you're moving good and slow, I mean, you can maneuver on grass, you can.
Yeah, that's what's, you know, if you get a leak out in the middle of the park, you can drive that out there slow and.
Garrett, what, what brand is it?
It's a Caterpillar.
Caterpillar?
Okay.
Um, and then met with Stan today, and I think we're just gonna do Linda's lot, I don't think it's gonna take much. I'm gonna get a tiller, gonna. Break up the bad parts, you know, take it out, put some good topsoil in, some grass seed, and I know that. Uh, he saw, or Dana and Tim were here that one day, and they, and they did go over and you can see the grasses coming up and, and. So.
They didn't move on that.
I didn't realize that. Yeah, and so they did it all along the side, but this is in front of her house by her tree, so I, we're just, we're just gonna get it done, get it over with.
Is there a lot of rock in there?
There is, and it's the, and it's not like river rock, it's not round, it's the gravel. Yeah, like the, um, basically limestone, yeah, basically, so. So we'll get that.
So you're doing the front, and KLJ did the side, or you're gonna redo the side?
I don't.
No, cause the grass is coming up, I saw that too.
I think it looked good.
Yeah.
Might need a little more water, but. Anyways, so we'll, we'll get the front taken care of.
Thank you for doing, yeah.
Okay.
Gary and Trevor will be going to a class next week. Twenty fifth, twenty, or twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and they'll both be taking uh. An exam at the end for wastewater collections, I think, so. Good, they're, they're getting a blue on that, great, pretty motivated to get it done, so.
Did you tell them to bring swim trucks?
This is just in back.
Yes.
Good for you for encouraging you.
Yes. I don't have anything else.
Okay, very good, you guys have been working hard and it's showing, so, thank you. Okay, now, I'm twenty-two, any items for discussion? No action to be taken? Seeing none, the next city council meeting will be November ninth at six thirty. And I'll let you know when the, the sheriff's department would like to join us. We have nothing for executive session, does anyone have any other, other?
So I just have, so Dan and I are on emergency. Uh, so, you should probably let him know about that sheriff's thing too, cause we should definitely try to be there.
Yeah, well, we'll probably be right here, right here, yeah, so, yes.
Just so he knows and he can plan ahead.
Yeah, okay.
Forgot the message we met with, some of the deputies the other day, trying to go to heaven, storm, you know.
Oh, yes, tell them about that, yes.
But, I think, I think we got pretty good, I mean, you guys did such a good job of having everything come together last year, that's kinda. We can just follow that through.
And what Garrett's talking about is the new deputy, what's his name?
I can't say, I can't ask anybody, his name's Josh.
Josh requested that we get together, he brought in the new law enforcement gentleman from Badlands National Park. And then Garrett and Carolyn and I, uh, just, we sat down and visited about. What happened in the storm, where's the keys to the Red Cross, just common. Just things that he wanted to know more about, because he wasn't involved last year.
Did we get no blankets yet?
Well, I thought they refilled them like almost.
Did they? I, I don't.
Like within weeks.
Okay, I, I, it's just that.
Yeah, so, well, maybe we better check, that'll be a big surprise, and Stan wants blankets. Yeah, so we don't wanna go there, okay, so anyway, that, and that went well, so. Okay, with that, we have said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.